Thank you. Hello and good evening. Tonight is Monday, November 8th. This is the Guilford Board of Education meeting. I invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. A number of you have heard me say this before, but I'll say it again. Both because masks are required within school buildings and because in Guilford masks are required in public buildings, we ask everyone to wear a mask. It looks like everyone is. Each of us on the board or in the administration, when we are speaking, will probably take it off so that you can hear us, so that the public viewing on TV can hear us and then put it back on. So I appreciate your cooperation. This is an exciting evening. We are going to be welcoming four new board members. We are extremely lucky and I am grateful to have Judge Keneffick join us. He will be administering the oath to each of these new board members and to Moira Rader, who was reelected. Judge Keneffick was on the Board of Ed in the past, so he has a number of wonderful connections with us. Judge, thank you so much for being with us tonight.
My pleasure.
Would you like me to call people up to you or do you have a list in front of you?
I can do it.
Wonderful. Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. And as was just stated, I was on this board for about 20 years from the mid-'70s to the mid-'90s. And since then, I've been a judge in New Haven and it's a pleasure to come back to swear in the new members to the board. An exciting time for everybody. So first, I'll call Jennifer Baldwin. Raise your right hand, Jennifer. Now, do you, Jennifer Baldwin, solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue a citizen thereof and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of the office of the Board of Education member to the best of your abilities? So help you God.
I will.
Congratulations. Kristi Faulkner? All right. Kristi Faulkner, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue a citizen thereof and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of the office of the Board of Education member to the best of your abilities? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations. Now, Petra? Now, Petra, do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue a citizen thereof and that you will discharge, according to law, the duties of the office of Board of Education member to the best of your abilities? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations. Moira Rader? Moira Rader, do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you remain a citizen thereof and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of the office of the Board of Education member to the best of your ability? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations. Finally, Arnold Skretta? Raise your right hand. Arnold Skretta, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue a citizen thereof and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of the office of Board of Education member to the best of your abilities? So help you God.
I so swear.
Congratulations. Congratulations to all the new members. Good luck.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Wonderful. I did want to note that our colleague Kristin Peck could not be here tonight. She had a prior family commitment that she absolutely couldn't change. She was a little disappointed, to say the least. But I just want to share, she asked me to just share this to my colleagues. I am sorry to miss tonight's ceremony. I am there in spirit to Mrs. Baldwin, Mrs. Faulkner, Mr. Petra and Mr. Skretta. Thank you for your service and welcome to the Board of Education. I look forward to working with such a thoughtful, experienced group. So I did just want to share that from Kristin. Wonderful. The next, I do want to pause for a moment. We do, oh wait, I guess I should, I'll go to election of officers and then I'm going to take that step. The next item on the agenda is election of officers. This is where we, as a board, will vote for a chair, a vice chair and a secretary for the next two years of board service. We do this after every election. I am going to hand out a piece of paper to each of my colleagues here. We do, by our bylaws, we do a written vote. Ballots will be collected. I will hand them around the table and then Dr. Freeman will count them and let them know what the vote is. We are first going to elect a chairperson for the board. Is there a motion to elect someone, nominate someone as chair? All right. And who would you like to elect?
It is my privilege to nominate Dr. Katie Balastresi to be Chair of the Board of Ed. As many here are very aware of matinee meetings, Katie has been an incredible leader for our board through really unprecedented times. We managed a pandemic under her leadership, but beyond that, she is insightful, experienced, always available to us as a board and also to the community. She has managed to maintain complete respect and decorum in our meetings. She has been a wonderful mentor to me and so I see no one better fit to continue as Chair of the Board than Dr. Balastresi.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Any other nominations for chair? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to ask each of you to fill out the form in front of you. And then you may fold it and pass it around.
So with eight affirmative votes and no dissenting votes, Dr. Balastresi has been reelected to be the Chair of the Board of Education. Congratulations, Dr. Baldwin.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Moira, for those wonderful words and I appreciate the confidence and will serve certainly with honor. Next, we will be electing a vice chair for the board. Is there a nomination for vice chair? Dr. Hirsch, go ahead.
I would like to nominate Moira Rader, who has been on the board now six, this-
Four years.
Four years and has served as secretary and was a very active and articulate candidate in this just recent election and will be equally as diligent in serving as vice chair.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there a second to that nomination? Fighting over a second at the end of the table. Are there any other nominations? All right. So please, if you would. You may have an extra sheet.
With eight affirmative votes and no dissenting votes, Mrs. Rader has been elected as the co-chair, the vice chair of the Board of Education.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. And last, we will be electing a secretary for the board. Is there a nomination for the position of secretary?
Yes, I enthusiastically nominate Ms. Kristin Peck, who has shown a willingness to see past party lines and affiliations and work towards progress and compromise. She does so even when it's not easy. Kristin puts all of our children first and as a parent and board member, will always prioritize the social and emotional needs of our children and put their education first.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Wonderful. Are there any other nominations for secretary? All right, hearing none, I ask you to fill out the ballot.
With eight affirmative votes and no dissenting votes, Mrs. Peck has been elected Secretary of the Board of Education.
Wonderful. All right. I will certainly let Kristin know after this meeting. That's wonderful. Okay. Before we go to the next agenda item, I do want to take a minute. Dr. Freeman has asked that we add an item to the agenda tonight and we have to vote to do so. He's asking that we add an item that would be action on a field trip for the girls cross-country. This would come under the board agenda, so I'll make it 11.9. Is there a motion to accept this addition to the board agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Terrific. All right. We're now going to act on the minutes of October 12, 2021. I will note for the viewing public that those of us who are returning members will be voting on this item or only those who have us who are returning members will be voting on this item and then we will proceed with the rest of the meeting with all present Board of Ed members voting. So is there a motion to accept the minutes of the October 12, 2021 Board of Ed meeting?
So moved.
All right. Second. Are there any corrections to these minutes?
Yes, I'm on them.
I didn't have any.
No.
No? Excellent. All right. So all in favor accepting the board minutes for October 12, 2021?
Aye.
Aye. I'm just realizing there are four of us.
There's a quorum present and all voting voted in the affirmative, so I'll check, but I think that we're fine.
Okay. And then we'll, if need be, we'll revote.
Yes, if we need to correct it, we will.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Excellent. All right. We are now up to a public forum for topics on the board agenda only. So if there is anyone present from the public who would like to address the board on topics of the agenda, we can certainly hear them now. All right. I'm not seeing anyone.
Excuse me. Kevin, is there anybody on the Zoom meeting?
Oh, thank you, yes. I should have checked.
Nope, there's no electronic queue either.
Excellent. All right. Review and approval of expenditures for the month of October 2021. Mr. Dalventura?
Thank you, Dr. Balastresi. The board had the opportunity to review the financial report and the warrants at our operations meeting. Some of the highlights, as discussed, expenditures for the month of October were just shy of $5 million, $4,876,000, $537.02. Expenditures and encumbrages through the end of October were 29.22 of the budget as compared to 29.36 in 2020 to 21 and 28.42 in 2019 to 20. That's important to note that we've been looking back at the 2019-2020 year as it's the best kind of comparison to make of a normal school year. I think what we're finding in these reports is that we are trending more towards those numbers now than we were looking at the 2020-21 numbers. Revenue for October 2021 was $4,779.36, which include $1,447 for Medicaid, $3,296 for pre-K tuition and $36 for a donation from Coca-Cola. Salaries were expended approximately to the prior year. Employee benefits, the percent of the budget expended is lower than the prior year. Life and disability insurance lines are higher than the prior year due to timing of payments. Let's see. Capital budget was a bit higher than prior year. Transportation as well expended is higher than the prior year. And tuition saw a lower budget expended than the prior year. Other than that, as discussed in the operations meeting, we went through the warrants. With any questions, comments? I move to accept the financial report.
Wonderful. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion or any further questions? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. I think we got everyone. Wonderful. Thank you. There's now an opportunity for any communications that any board member feels that they've received that they need to report on during the last month? All right. I do want to just take a minute during this communications, I guess it's kind of an odd place, but the best that I can think of, to note that we did have four prior Board of Ed members who are no longer with us and I just wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge them and thank them for their service. Amy Sullivan was on the board for eight years, most recently served as the vice chair. Ted Sands was on the board for eight years, served many of those as the Operations Committee Chair. Mary Best was on the board for four years, most recently served as a Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee Chair. And Joe Galino served on the board for two years and offered some very helpful experience in union negotiations, which he has some experience in. So I just wanted to acknowledge their service. Thank you for their commitment to the town and to the district and also for being great colleagues. It's now time for student representatives. Yes, thank you. Student representatives, welcome. How are you guys?
Hello.
Excellent. So I'm going to turn it over to you to tell us what's going on specifically in the individual schools.
Yep.
So, oh, sorry. Sorry, Jerry. Go ahead.
First, at Melissa Jones Elementary School, grade four students are currently working in groups to research defense mechanisms of a specific animal and become an expert on that animal. They're closely reading complex texts as well as webpages and answering questions about these texts to gain a deeper understanding. And also, like all GPS schools, the Jones faculty had an all-day professional development session that focused on accelerating learning through meaningful task design and effective formative assessment. And lastly, the Melissa Jones PTO held an outdoor fall festival on Saturday where students were able to enjoy an estimation station, play games and try to win themed raffle baskets that were created with donations from families in each classroom. At Baldwin Middle School, on Election Day, the teaching staff participated in professional learning activities which focused on the instructional core, scaffolding practices and also formative assessment. They also had a wonderful presentation by Maya Schofield and Jin Lozier Omen about the importance of wellness for both students and faculty. Baldwin also held their first ever PTO trunk-or-tree event for students and families. It was held on Thursday, October 28th, with an incredible turnout of almost 800 people. Special thanks to Guilford High School Assistant Principal, Mr. Raben, and Guilford High School student volunteers who helped with the event. This Thursday, Baldwin Middle School will be recognizing Veterans Day as well. In addition to learning about the history and importance of Veterans Day, students are also helping to put together a wall of honor for veterans. It has become a powerful day of learning for students and staff every year. And lastly, parent-teacher conferences are being held at Baldwin Middle School on Monday, November 15th and Tuesday, November 16th.
At Adams Middle School, the fall sports have finished this past weekend with the Boys and Girls Cross Country teams, both participating in the middle school state championships. And congratulations to Jack and Kiara on earning all-state honors. Adams also had a great fall interscholastic competition with the Boys and Girls Soccer Team. Adams' after-school activities are now up and running with very high participation rates. The National Junior Honor Society sponsored the Halloween Boo Bash. This was their first school-held event and other than the sporting event since the pandemic began. The Adams Peer Helpers held an annual walkathon this past Friday. Students walked from Adams to downtown and collected pledges from their sponsors. This past month, seventh and eighth graders learned of the Say Something Anonymous reporting system and now they are almost immediately following the presentations that were held. Now students can report their concerns to this portal. And in honor of the anti-bullying campaign, Adams Middle School is also holding students to sign an "Am I an Ally?" banner that they're going to hold in front of the school. For Guilford High School, Justin Schifrin and Julia Anthony were both named the Fall SEC Scholar-Athletes. We also held our homecoming dance this past Saturday and 500 students attended this dance. And at AW Cox, they are looking forward to their parent-teacher conferences next week and they are also engaged in a month of gratitude where students are involved in lessons around gratitude with their social workers and their teachers.
So for LEET News, in first grade, in writing, students are beginning to create opinion pieces and within this unit, students will learn how to write a paragraph by introducing their topic, stating their opinion and supporting their opinion with evidence and making a closing statement. In third grade, they had a butterfly unit and it was very successful. The students were able to witness three out of the four stages of the life cycle firsthand. The Student Council is sponsoring an annual food drive to support local food banks and the related art teachers are creating multidisciplinary lessons to support students' content learning. At Guilford Lakes, students in second to fourth grade have been engaged in SAM activities with the library media specialist. There will be a school-wide virtual ceremony for Veterans Day. Veterans, veterans that will be delivered, or students will make thank you notes for veterans that will be delivered to Meals on Wheels. The cards will be delivered to veterans in the Meals on Wheels program on Thursday. The recycled art show begins this week. Students have created artwork from recycled items. Classes will, classes will visit the exhibits and will be a part of the scavenger hunt for different items. For Guilford High School, Julia Anthony also named one of the class MM All-State Honorees of Girls Cross Country. And Maddie Epke was named the SEC Field Hockey Player of the Year while the girls' field hockey team defeated Cheshire to become the SEC Field Hockey Champions.
Wonderful.
And I have a few final comments about Guilford High School's events.
Please, go right ahead.
The Feminist Alliance ran a breast cancer awareness campaign at the high school for the month of October. In addition to a Pink Day and morning announcements designed to raise awareness about breast cancer, they also collected thoughts of hope for those diagnosed with the disease and put them on display on the second-floor landing, which you can actually see over there.
Oh, wonderful.
And November is Native American Heritage Month. In addition, in addition to messaging on the digital boards around the school recognizing this month and the contributions of Native Americans to Connecticut and U.S. history and culture, social studies and English classes are incorporating lessons into their curriculum that delve into the Native American perspective in the United States.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I think we may have also just some new news right outside.
Indeed, the girls won. The girls-
The girls soccer team just won the first round of states.
And Jerry, is Jerry and the boys team are playing tomorrow night?
Excellent. Good luck.
Good luck.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Any questions for our student representatives? Thank you so much. It is great to have you. As usual, you are welcome to stay, but we also appreciate that you probably have homework or other things, so feel free to exit and we look forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks so much. Okay. Dr. Freeman, we are up to the superintendent's report, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Balastresi. Two items to report on tonight. One is I do want to note that due to some scheduling conflicts, we have been a little late getting out of the gate on the budget build for next school year. We would usually have had some public meetings prior to this date. Those dates will be scheduled, so we will be scheduling a meeting for the Board of Education to meet with the administrative team to talk about priorities for next year. Additionally, we will be scheduling the first opportunity for the public to be involved in the budget process. This is the open hearing where the budget, the committee, the community is invited to speak to the board about their concerns and priorities before the board or the administration present any drafts of the budget. Additionally, in the next coming weeks, we will be meeting at Central Office with all of the building leaders, the principals and all of the department heads who will be bringing in their first draft budgets, which we will then be compiling and we will be bringing a first draft of that budget to all of you in the very early new year that will be based on those public meetings as well as those in-house meetings that we'll start pulling together. Likewise, there was a meeting that was canceled for the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee. That meeting will be rescheduled very shortly, moving into the future, and that will be an opportunity for Dr. Seiler to present- that will be an opportunity for Dr. Seiler to present to you the results of the curricular self-audit that we have been talking about for some time now. I will remind all of you that the last time Dr. Seiler presented to the board with board encouragement, we slowed that process down because there was a lot of teacher involvement in that process, and we wanted to be very respectful of the time and impact that that was having on teachers as they were working through this pandemic. But Dr. Seiler is looking forward to meeting with all of you in public to share the results of that study.
That's great.
The next item moves me into a COVID update, but I'm happy to pause, take a breath, and see if there's any questions on either the budget cycle or the CIA committees.
I don't think so. Anybody have any questions for, so just, just a reminder for the public, as Dr. Freeman noted, we do a public forum in the fall that allows the public to come to us and express their wishes for things they would like to see Guilford Public Schools and the Board of Ed focus on in a budget or make a priority. Then, in the, the last Monday and Tuesday of January, I don't have the dates in front of me, we do do then two nights of public forum, once there is actually an established draft budget. Another opportunity for the public to come out and to speak to us directly about particular line items, things that they see in the budget that they support, things that they don't see in the budget that they really want to see, those types of things. So please keep your eyes peeled, and we will try to communicate in as many venues as possible when those meetings are coming so that we can get your input.
Thank you, Dr. Bell Stracey.
Terrific.
Two significant updates around the COVID pandemic that I want to, to discuss tonight, both of which have been in the news independent of Guilford schools recently, but both of which impact Guilford Public Schools. Last week, Governor Lamont announced that the State Department of Education and the State Department of Health will be launching a screen-and-stay protocol for quarantines that affect students. So while our numbers are dramatically lower from where they were last year, and even from the beginning of the school year, we are still periodically experiencing students who, or members of the school community, who test positive for COVID. And when that happens, we need to determine who may have been a close contact to that person, and we have been continuing to implement quarantines for students even in these first months of this school year. The screen-and-stay protocol will provide limited exceptions to the necessity for quarantining for in-school close contacts. Specifically, the way this protocol will work is that if a student, your child, is identified as a close contact to another individual who might be positive, who is positive for COVID, if that contact, if that close contact has occurred in a supervised, masked, mask-to-mask classroom setting with a parent attestation that they will check their child for symptoms every morning, those students in that specific setting will be allowed to continue to come to school, essentially to avoid the requirement of quarantining. The reason for this is what I have been sharing with the board and with the community for the past 18 months. When we have identified positive, positive COVID cases in our community, there are almost always outside contacts that folks then come to school. We have seen very few infections that we can trace back to classroom-to-classroom exposure. It's really important to note that that exception is only for in-class, supervised by an adult, mask-to-mask contacts. If your child was sitting with a student at lunch, and the next day we determine that one of those children was COVID-positive, your child at lunch would still be required to quarantine. If your child is involved in after-school extracurricular or out-of-school activities, if your child is exposed to a parent who is positive for COVID, or attends a birthday party and there's a COVID-positive person at the birthday party, those exposures would still require quarantine. It would be a very limited exception for those classroom exposures only. We are working on the logistics in the system that will, will be required to launch that. So while the governor announced this last week, we have some communication systems that we need to put into place. While the student will be allowed to continue attending class, the students will have to have lunch in an alternative setting and may not be able to attend all school activities, like chorus, for instance. So we have some work to do as a system to have the logistics in place, but we expect that we will have the screen-and-stay protocol in place that will reduce the number of quarantines by the end of next week. So we've got some work to do with our principal team, we have some work to do with our communication team, but we should have that in place.
Question. So, so it sounds like what you're talking about when you speak about logistics is something to the effect of three kids in this class now can't go to chorus, and so we need to determine what they are doing for that period of time and who is with them.
That's part of it, and part of it is simply the communications. All through this pandemic, communications about quarantine have simply been one-directional. We've told you that your student was exposed, and there are now multiple, there are multiple buckets that students will fall in. So when we determine that there was a positive student in a classroom, now we need to determine who have been close contacts to that student. We then need to tease out any of those students who are fully vaccinated. We then look at the remaining pool and need to determine which of those students were only exposed in a supervised mask-to-mask classroom setting. They're excused. We then need to identify who was exposed in other than just the classroom settings. Now we need to communicate with those parents, and before those students may continue to attend school, we must receive the signed attestation from the parents that they will check for flu or COVID-like symptoms every morning and will not send their school, their students to school if they are experiencing any of those symptoms. Once they return to school, we then have to determine where they can have lunch appropriately, what activities will be put in place for any activities on their schedule that they may not safely participate in now, like singing or playing a wind instrument, or even some PE exercises that they might engage in. That is going to be a little complicated by the fact that we've been struggling with coverage in some areas this year because of labor shortage. So it's great news. We just need a little time to figure out how it can be implemented in each of our schools. It will have the greatest impact in the schools that have the lowest number of vaccinated students, so it'll have the largest impact at the elementaries in Baldwin, where currently they don't have any vaccinated, well, Baldwin has very few, and then the elementaries don't have any vaccinated students at this time.
Okay. Questions?
Dr. Freeman, I was just reading, it's, the governor's pretty much handed it down to districts to determine to participate and then how to participate, correct? So it's, or is it, is there a guideline, that's a state-level guideline of how to do this? Are we kind of given the framework and then we can kind of?
We've been given the expectations and sort of the limits of what it may provide, and, and we met this afternoon with local health officials, with our advising physician and a representative of our principals, to start figuring out now how we will do that. We want to have our students in school. This is an opportunity to have students in school. We agree with the assessment that very few of the exposures have been in classroom, and so we're excited to move in this direction. It's just a little awkward that the governor's announcement made it sound like it's going to start tomorrow. We need some time to put the detail to it here locally. We also met earlier today with Madison and with the East Shore Health District, all the superintendents and health directors. So Madison, Guilford, Branford, North Branford, East Haven, all talked about, both about the screen-and-stay and how we can best implement that. The, the borders are porous, and so we often want, we want to make sure that we're doing things similarly and on a similar timeframe as the neighboring districts. And then we also talked about item number two on this list, which is the vaccine clinics, and I'll, I'll talk about that in a minute as well.
Thank you. Other questions? Anybody? All right.
So really good news. It's a little complicated, and again, we just need to ask for a little bit of patience as we put all the pieces in place.
Absolutely.
The other piece of good news, and I actually think the more significant good news, is that we do now have approval for a five-through-eleven vaccine. And so students are, even our youngest students now, almost all the way down to our youngest students, have the opportunity to be vaccinated. We strongly encourage all of our families to consider having your children vaccinated. Vaccinations will protect your students against becoming sick. Vaccinations will help to reduce the overall number of positive cases that we have in the community and reduce all of those, the need to quarantine just, just sick kids. To make it really, really clear, screen-and-stay will avoid the necessity, the necessity of your child quarantining and missing school for that really limited classroom exposure. A vaccinated student exposed to, to anybody who is positive may continue coming to school. So in addition to protecting your child against, against getting sick, if your child is exposed in an extracurricular activity outside of school, a parent in the home who is positive, a vaccinated student may continue coming to school even when they have been identified as a close contact in any setting. So it really is good news. Again, working with our local health director and with the, the regional health districts, we will be providing so far two in-district clinics. The first will be this Saturday, November 13th, at Lakes Elementary School. We will be providing a clinic for Guilford students ages five to 11 to come in and receive their first dose of the vaccine. It is free. There is no appointment necessary. There will be further guidance coming out this week, asking to stagger the arrival times by your, the, the first letter of your last name, so that the staff can handle and so that nobody's waiting in a line. We will be offering a second follow-on clinic after school on the following Thursday. That is an after-school clinic. That one will be open to any member of the Guilford School community who has a five-to-11-year-old child. So that means, again, five-to-11-year-olds who live in Guilford and attend the Guilford Schools, but also staff members in the Guilford Schools who have a five-to-11-year-old, they will be invited to bring their child to that Thursday clinic as well. Both of those clinics will have associated second-dose dates that are, are tied to your first dose, and if demand, if demand is present, we will schedule a third clinic to continue to, to meet the demand. Until everybody who wants a vaccine for their five-to-11-year-old has received one, we will continue to help facilitate that here in Guilford Public Schools. We will also continue to push out information about other independent clinics. We know that there are already five-to-11-year-olds who have been vaccinated when they came to school today. So Yale is offering clinics, pharmacies are offering clinics. Any parent who doesn't want to wait until this Saturday can, of course, have their child vaccinated independently as well.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, go.
I do. I just, to clarify, is there any cost associated with this?
Nope. There's no cost associated with this. This is free, and we're just facilitating it locally in Guilford to try to make it as easy as possible to, to, to receive the vaccine.
Other questions?
Additionally, I'll just note, this is a little, on Tuesdays, Guilford is all, Guilford Health Department is also providing clinics for third booster doses for anybody who qualifies for a third, a third dose or that second booster. Those are being scheduled through the firehouse on Tuesday afternoons. There will be one tomorrow, and I believe the next couple of Tuesdays following. Those are also walk-in clinics, and there's no, no appointment needed. There's no cost associated with that booster.
And will the second dose be scheduled on a weekend as well?
If you come to the first Saturday clinic, your, your second dose will be two weeks from that Saturday, and if you come to the Thursday clinic, your second dose will be two weeks from that Thursday. We wanted to have, we know, we wanted to have a non-Saturday for families who may work weekends, so we wanted to have a, a weekday and a weekend day. We have put out a survey for interest. There's much more interest in the Saturday, I think partially because it's a Saturday, and I think partially because it's sooner. But we will see where the interest lies, and we will schedule a third as, as best suits the interest, if necessary.
Okay. No questions? Terrific.
Really good news.
It is terrific news. It's terrific news.
We've been having much lower impact of quarantines, and now this will lower even further, even further. We're just excited to have kids in schools.
No, it's excellent.
I think my only final note, the, again, the, as I stated, the, the screen-and-stay is contingent upon continued masking. It is supervised mask-to-mask contact in the classroom. My understanding is that the governor intends to continue to uphold the mask mandate through the holiday season, and there may be some conversation about altering that in the new year. But my understanding, it's going to take five weeks for all of the students who want to be vaccinated to reach that level of being fully vaccinated. The screen-and-stay is built on the mask mandate being in place, so I think this is what things will look like through the end of this calendar year. And then depending on how much vaccine uptake we experience, depending on what the, the rate of spread continues to be in Guilford, I think we, we have, will have an opportunity to have statewide conversation about changing those protocols as we look about entering the new calendar year.
Okay. Excellent.
Really good news.
Excellent. All right. So we now go to the board agenda. Number 11.1 is to act on personnel items. So I'm first going to ask for a motion to ratify the appointment of the following teachers. Molly McKenna, one full-time equivalent Guilford High School English teacher. Erin Marchetti, one full-time equivalent District ELL teacher. And Matthew DePama, one full-time equivalent Adams Middle School Social Studies teacher. Is there a motion to ratify the appointment of these three teachers?
So moved.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then I'm going to seek a motion to ratify the resignation of the following teachers. Megan Moran at Cox Leet, a special education teacher, eight years of service to the district. Thomas Bushnell at Adams, a social studies teacher with nine years of service to the district. And Janet Harrington, a Guilford High School PE health teacher, 38 years of service in Guilford. Is there a motion to ratify the resignation of these teachers?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Wonderful. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We absolutely certainly thank these, these three teachers for their service, and 38 years is a remarkable amount of time to give to the district, so I'll hope you thank her for us.
Absolutely.
On that. Okay. Number 11.2 is to approve a donation of $4,627 from the Guilford Touchdown Club for the salary of an assistant coach. Is there a motion to approve this donation? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. That passes. We are going to table items 11.3 and 11.4, which were to act on the educational specifications for a replacement, roof replacement project at Baldwin, and then also the cost estimate. There's some work that still needs to be done on these. We found this out in our operations committee meeting, so we are going to table those items probably until next month. So I'm going to go to 11.5, which is to receive the 2021, 2022 district, district priorities and initiatives. I am going to turn to Dr. Freeman to walk us through what those are. Again, I'm going to suggest this is a receive item tonight, and it will allow us, certainly we can have some discussion tonight if we wish, but it will also allow each of us to take some time and look these over and spend some time with them if we'd like. So, Dr. Freeman.
Thank you. So we're really proud of this document and the way that this document has developed and evolved over the years. The priorities that are listed on top are the long-range priorities, goal statements, vision of the school system. These three priorities have not changed substantially probably in the last five or six years. We have reordered them. We have tinkered with them, but they have stayed in place because of, because of the way that they're worded and because of the way that they're structured. The first goal, the first priority, rather, speaks to the overall environment for everybody who is part of this school system. It is the air that we intend to breathe. It says that our schools will be physically and emotionally safe, healthy, equitable, and caring places for learning for both the students and the adults in this community. And that environment for learning is built upon supportive relationships and positive decision-making. We want to be a safe and healthy place physically and emotionally for all of those people who come and learn in this setting. Teachers learn every day. Students learn every day. Within that overall environment, we then go a layer deeper, and we focus on the professional environment that we intend to create. We hold very high expectations for the educational professionals who work in the system. So the next priority speaks to the way that we build the professional environment, and it reads, "Teaching and learning will be supported by instructionally-focused leadership, subject area coaches and specialists, professional learning communities, and diverse instructional resources." This means that our teachers will have the materials they need to teach effectively. They will have opportunities to work collaboratively with their peers in order to teach effectively. They will be supported by specialists and professional developers who help them grow in their pedagogy, and ultimately, they will be supported by district and- in their pedagogy, and ultimately, they will be supported by district and building-level leaders who are instructional leaders first and managers second. That is the professional environment that we strive to create and provide to the teachers every single day. Because if we create the overall environment, and if we create the professional environment, we are then more likely to be able to create the classroom environment that is really what we are all about, and that's the final priority, and that is about what students experience in classes. And that reads, "All students will engage in academically rigorous tasks in every class. Instruction will be aligned to content area standards, integrated with the principles of learning, and measured by the ongoing collection of evidence of learning. We expect kids to be leading their own learning. We expect it to be aligned to state standards but not dictated or, or prescribed by any standard or any outside curricula, and we expect that it will align to nine principles of learning that we have embraced for years and that I won't go over in detail tonight, but we will go over in the near future once again, in that we are not beholden to any single test or data set to tell us if we are being successful. We measure our success by the ongoing collection of evidence of learning." Now, that includes important tests and measures, but it includes a lot more as well. Those are the three overarching, long-term priorities that we strive for and that shape what we do. And then each year, we individually shape initiatives that sit underneath those priorities. Last year, we only had three initiatives. We usually have five or six. This year, I believe it is important, again, to limit those things on which we focus. It continues to be a very difficult year this year. We're not out of the pandemic, although we are processing through it. This year, we propose that our initiatives should include maintaining healthy hyg-, maintaining health and hygiene protocols and practices to ensure that we provide a safe and healthy environment for all students and members of the school community. And we just talked about those. My report tonight was about the continuing ways that we will make sure that we are prioritizing student time in school, but that we're making sure that we keep that time safe and, and healthy. And that needs, there was a time, probably last May and June, that I thought this wouldn't be a needed initiative this year. It is. We learned through the Delta spike over the summer, and as we move into the school year, that we can't go back to normal yet. That needs to continue to be a focus for all of us. Additionally, we will support an accelerated approach to instruction that promotes deep learning for all students. The phrase accelerated approach to instruction is an educational-specific term. The Board of Ed had some lengthy conversation with Dr. Crystal about that approach. We will return to that. Again, I don't want, we don't need to get into that tonight, but the, the bottom line is that we will not pretend that last year didn't happen. We will not reset the clock and repeat all of last year and the last quarter of the year before that for our students. Time has moved on. Second graders have moved to third grade. Juniors have become seniors. We know that there was learning that occurred last year, and it was unlike anything that we've experienced before. We will not try to erase it and go back and remediate or repeat that entire school year. We will take students where they are as they come to us this year. We will look at the grade level standards and expectations for this year's work. We will prioritize the most important parts of it. We will adjust instruction and scaffold for the students who need help, but we're going to move through this year, and we're going to provide this year's content to students in a way that they can all access it and all get into it and not lose a year. It doesn't mean that we're blind to what happened last year. It doesn't mean that we ignore it. We have ESER funds that have come into the district to help us make these adjustments. We're working with teachers. This was the focus of November 2nd Professional Development Day. And again, we'll spend time at upcoming workshop meetings and CIA meetings to talk about that approach much more specifically. But that is the initiative for rigor and high expectations in content this year. We're not going to lower our expectations. We're not going to dumb down this year's presentation. We're not going to slow down this year's presentation. We're going to bring everybody into where they need to be. And then finally, and this last initiative is word-for-word exactly as it read last year when we brought it forward to this Board of Education. "We will continue to further develop a culture and the instructional practices that foster social, emotional wellness, equity, and social justice in our schools." The academics are why we're here. That's what brought us together and formed our school district 140 years ago. But socially-emotional learning, equity, social justice, when you listen to the reports from our students today, those are core, essential components of what we teach in school, and they, we cannot pretend that they're not important. We cannot pretend that our students didn't have a social and emotional impact from this year. Students did not have the same amount of social contact last year that they would usually have. That is part of our mandate as well. And so we are really proud to bring forward tonight these continuing priorities and these specific, really focused initiatives this year to make sure that we continue to come through this pandemic and come out of this pandemic well and high-achieving with healthy kids.
Excellent. Does anybody have questions, comments about any of these at the moment? Certainly, we can be open to those if people do.
May I just continue to comment?
Of course. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I sort of left all of this out. These priorities and initiatives become enormously important, first because they speak to the community about what we're focused on. They then become important as department heads and teachers and area leads use these to shape the professional learning and the supports that go on in the schools around the teaching staff. They help inform budgetary decisions that we make next year moving forward. These goals and initiatives inform all the way down to individual growth goals that teachers may set for themselves in their supervision and evaluation planning with their principals. So these speak to what the focus will be long-term and short-term for the school district, and that through line goes all the way back to the classroom in multiple ways. I just.
No, no, no. That's really important, because I was going to say, we, we will see these in the budget book.
Yep.
They will, they will, again, once they are finalized and approved, and, and we do this every year, Guilford Public Schools brings this to us every year to really guide the work that happens in the classroom. All right. So what we'll do then is everyone will have an opportunity to look these over, think about them. We will vote next month. If anyone has any questions, Dr. Freeman, do you mind if people reach out as they spend some time with these and?
It's my favorite thing to talk about.
Excellent.
I would encourage people to reach out to me between now and the next meeting if there's conversation or questions.
Okay. Terrific. All right. We are now, it seems crazy that we're doing this, but we are doing this. We are now getting as a receive item, two drafts of the 2022, 2023 school calendar. So we have draft one and draft two. I will note that the differences are small, and I will call them out now. One is the start date. So draft one suggests a school start date on September 1st, 2022, which is the Thursday prior to Labor Day. The, the draft number two for our consideration starts September 6th, which is the Tuesday immediately after Labor Day. The impact of that is on two or three things here. When the first three of five full-day professional development days are, which happen before the first day of school. The date of graduation, which only moves two days. And then likewise, the end of the school year date, which clearly coincides with graduation and any early dismissal days. A reminder that the graduation date does move with snow days. But, Dr. Freeman, unless I've missed something, that was my assessment of any differences between the two calendars.
Well, that is accurate. I'll, this calendar is presented, and it is a reflection of a regional template. A number of years ago, the state had a lot of conversation about a statewide mandated calendar, so that communities had the same, right, so that a, a family that had students in one district and parents worked in another as teachers would have similar start date and, and vacations. It also provides a lot of efficiency as there are multiple districts around the state that share transportation for lots of reasons, and when different school districts have different days off. We moved away from mandating that. There was a lot of interest in allowing communities to continue to have some individualization around their calendars. But what does happen is that the LEARN region, which includes school districts from Guilford out to Stonington, collaborates and creates a shared template. And then each district tries to personalize from that template. Particularly, what are important are the November and March Professional Development Days. All of those districts try to hold those shared dates, and it gives us opportunities to collaborate and have teachers work across districts by holding those shared dates. The big weeks off tend to fall the same. So the time off in December, the time off in April, even the couple of days off in February tend to be consistent by following that template. So those are important components. This calendar does continue to include school on Veterans Day. We hold Veterans Day as a school day, not as a day off. That was a decision that was made community-wide with lots of involvement from veterans in the community. Last year, and, and often that becomes a really rich learning and community day. Last year, that wasn't able to happen. This year, it's coming back in part, but we look forward to being able to return to the full events that we hosted on Veterans Day as we get into this calendar. It continues to include early release days on Wednesdays, which are really valuable learning days for our staff. It allows our staff to come together and have longer, more, more focused learning time. I think those are the big pieces. I will let you know that while we can support either one of these, the administrative leadership team prefers draft number two. They prefer the one that starts after Labor Day, since Labor Day falls so early in the school year. And we will note that the biggest concern there, the last day of school still falls within the same week. Often, the concern is if starting before Labor Day, after Labor Day pushes past one more weekend, that now gets difficult to do. A, a final note. It stays within the same week, but it moves all the way to Thursday. That means there's only room for one snow day, one emergency closure, before it would get pushed beyond that week. It is important to note that right now, we are not being afforded permission to use remote learning days for snow days or any other emergency closure. There's some conversation about that that's being raised. That might change. I don't know if it'll change for this coming winter, but it might change by the time this calendar moves forward, which makes, makes that opportunity to start after Labor Day even more attractive, should we be able to use remote learning opportunities for any emergency closing or even for some emergency closings. I, I do, I'll take this opportunity to say that again. We do not have permission. We will not be allowed to choose a remote learning day on a snow day as things stand right now. If it snows really seriously next week, we will be back to our three options of opening with snow happening, delaying the open but opening with snow happening, or closing because snow is happening. We do not, this year, have the opportunity to, to do a remote learning day. So, again, I, I think it's good to deliver these tonight. There's no need to make a decision tonight, and I'm happy to entertain questions in between now as well as in between meetings.
So we also have a new state holiday as well. So that plays into, that plays into number two a little bit as well, because should we have to go into the following week? Juneteenth is Monday.
Thank you. You will see that this calendar does have Juneteenth noted, and so if the school closings force us into next week, we will schedule that next day on Tuesday, the 20th, not Monday, the 19th, should we push out beyond that date. Thank you for noticing that.
And just, just for the viewing public, I think I, I noted each draft, I noted the start date. But just to be very clear, in draft number one, which is looking at a start date of September 1st, we're looking at a year-end date again prior to any snow days of June 13th. And the calendar in which, draft number two, in which we look at a September 6th start date, has an end date again prior to any snow days of June 15th. So they're both quite early, and maybe I'm just remembering years where we went to like the 26th or the 27th. Which are not fun. And these calendars maintain, I guess, for, for many families, this won't seem different. I'm remembering differently, but I have kids. A day before Thanksgiving as well as after.
Correct.
And then.
And a long weekend in February, but not an entire week off in February.
That's right.
A Monday and Tuesday off in February, not a full week off in February.
Terrific. And I noticed the spring break captures Good Friday, so it's a little longer.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, some years it does.
An extended April break, and then a, a December break that falls very neatly into a, into a one week. Yep.
Okay. Excellent. So we will vote on these next month as well. Okay.
Oh, all of your other items, I'm sorry, Dr. Bellis Tracy. You have also a draft Board of Education meeting calendar and a draft committee calendar that are associated with these calendars.
Right.
As the only differences here are start and end dates, those calendars are one version only, and they align to this calendar as they traditionally align to the school calendar.
Okay. So, again, receive, 11.7 is to receive the 2022 Board of Ed Meeting Calendar Draft. That is the one with our regular meetings that happen generally the second Monday of the month, although we'll note October 11th because of a holiday, and the workshop meetings. I did have a question, Dr. Freeman, as I was looking at this. So prior to the pandemic, we held workshop meetings in various schools in the district. Is that something we might consider in the future at some point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll very likely revert back to the practice of visiting the various schools for those.
Okay. It's just, it's such a great opportunity to be in the different buildings. All right.
I should also, it feels important to note at this meeting that this is a calendar of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Board of Education. It doesn't come close to being a calendar of all the meetings of the Board of Education.
And I should have known, because it was in the packet all along, back to my comment about budget meetings in January, right? January 24th, Monday, and January 25th are those public.
And they're here.
Forums. And they are.
Oh, yeah.
They used to be at Adams, so now they're being held here in the library.
So.
Larger space.
The location, right. So we, this is the anticipated calendar. We could easily change those locations, yes. We, we copied the locations from last year, when many of those meetings were Zoom, in fact, but we can easily revert these, certainly to taking the workshop meetings back into the various buildings, and we can decide what location may be best for those meetings as well.
And just so the viewing public knows, once this is voted on, this will be on the Guilford Public Schools website.
Yep.
And by state law, we are required to post agendas for our meetings prior to every meeting, so those will be available as well. So that's 11.7. And then 11.8, we are also receiving tonight is the committee meeting schedule, the Operations Committee, Policy Committee, and Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committees.
And those locations will follow the board, the full board meetings to which they're associated.
Correct. Right. Okay. So, and the Operations Committee happens every month prior to our regular Board of Ed meeting, the second Monday of every month. And then the Policy Committee and the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committees rotate or, or switch off every month prior to our workshop meetings. These are all public meetings. The regular Board of Ed meeting, the one we're all at right now, the second Monday of the month, is the one that regularly hosts a public comment period, but the public is always invited to any of these meetings. All right. That, oh, no, it brings us to 11.9, which is agenda item, Dr. Freeman, you asked us to add today, a field trip for the girls' cross-country team.
Yes, and this also falls under the topic of good news. So Friday afternoon, after school hours had concluded, the Guilford High School Girls' Cross Country Team qualified for the New England Regional Competition. So we are here tonight asking for your permission for seven students and one chaperone to travel out of state to Thetford, Vermont, to Thetford Academy that will be hosting the New England Cross Country Championship. That will be on 11 November 12th and November 13th. I apologize that we don't have the completed packet in front of you, but those are the pertinent details. And since it is an out-of-state activity, we're required to bring it to your attention, but also would ask for your approval. It's more than we need, but it's been our practice of late, so.
That's right.
Yep.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve this request for a field trip for seven students, one supervisor, November 12th and 13th for the girls' cross-country team?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
All right. That's wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Reports of committees. Moira. Moira, would you please give an update on the Policy Committee?
Sure. Well, our next meeting will be November 22nd, and we'll continue our agenda from the last meeting, which we had some revisions of some policies that need to be evaluated and decide what will move forward and some new language, COVID-related things that we have to kind of readjust. But the next meeting will be on November 22nd, Monday.
Okay. Terrific. The Operations Committee met just prior to this meeting. We did get an extensive update from Mr. Gurnum on a lot of facility projects that he's overseeing, as well as great news from the dining, dining service, lots and lots and lots of meals being served in our schools. Did you want to add something you were looking?
Yeah, and I was going to say, we failed to mention when we celebrated the soccer win, but the soccer win is taking place. It is the first event to occur on the refurbished stadium, track, and field.
That's right.
And it was a beautiful event. It's wonderful to have that facility open and available to students once again. So, that is a project that is completed and just really an exciting project. It's a fun one.
Does anyone else from the Operations Committee, have I missed anything important that we want to share? No? All right. The Curriculum Instruction Assessment Committee, Dr. Freeman, you noted we will be scheduling time with Dr. Siler quite soon, so that will be coming up.
And we'll probably be adding in there an overview of the accelerated process, the accelerated instructional process, as I mentioned earlier, so there'll be lots to do, as well as a revamping of some of the curricular approval processes that we want to bring forward to all of you.
Terrific. Okay. Any liaisons to town committees that have anything to report?
I will say that the LAM acquisition committee presented to the Board of Select LAM some bonding options.
Oh, interesting. Okay. Excellent. And then the last, excuse me all for picking up my phone, but I have a report from Kristen Peck, who is the liaison to LEARN, the LEARN Board of Directors, and that is our next item. So, her update for us tonight. In LEARN's Board of Directors meeting on September 14th, Director Kate Erickson discussed her significant staffing challenges across each segment and the dearth of state fund allocations to magnet schools. We also were joined by a guest speaker, the Superintendent from Madison, Dr. Craig Cook. He shared his district's SBAC scores, those are our state assessment scores, which were quite similar to our own, and advised that Madison is starting an Equity and Inclusion Committee per student requests. The LEARN Deputy, the LEARN Deputy Director Bridget Gordon Hickey presented the LEARN's Scope of Services for Marginalized Students, focusing specifically on the gender spectrum. The presentation addressed proving appropriate language and personal pronouns for students of the LGBT+ community. She presented, her presentation included statistics, definitions of personal pronouns, and students speaking about individual challenges experienced as part of a marginalized group. So, that is Mrs. Peck's report from the last LEARN meeting. Mrs. Peck is the representative from our board who goes to those meetings every month and reports back to us. All right. This is now an opportunity, we've come to the public questions, public comment part at the end of the meeting. This is an opportunity, if anyone wishes to address the board, it does not necessarily need to be on an agenda topic. If you do want to address the board, we simply ask you to come up, state your name and address. We do ask folks to try to keep it to four minutes. This helps particularly when there's a lot of people who want to speak. Is there anyone who is interested in addressing the board tonight?
Yeah, I'm going to come in.
Would you like to come? Come on up. I'm going to ask you to come over here. If you, yeah, if you would just like to come up, and if you can give us your name. Are you a student in Guilford? If you would like to take off your mask, you may. You don't have to. Terrific.
Maya Daniels, 55 Talbot Road. Hi, my name is Maya, and I'm a sixth grader at Baldwin Middle School. This is my first time at a Board of Education meeting. Thank you for letting me speak. I have heard that people come to these meetings sometimes to talk about things that are upsetting to them. I was going to come to tonight to talk about something that was upsetting to me, but around 12:50, that all changed. First, I have to tell you what happened to me on Friday. My friend Lila and I were in the girls' bathroom. We did not plan to go together, and we found a swastika carved into the dispenser. Next to the swastika was an arrow pointing at it with the word Nazi. My friend and I told my teacher, and she said that she would tell Mr. Hamill. It worried me to see a swastika. I never thought I'd see something like that at my school. My friend and I knew that it was wrong. It upset me to see something, to see, to think that someone at my school would put that up. People are always writing random stuff in the bathroom, but this felt very upsetting to me. I thought about it all weekend. But today, at 12:50, it happened. I called, I was called to the principal's office during lunch. I've never been called to the principal's office before. I decided I wasn't hungry anymore, and my teacher walked me down to Mr. Hamill's office. Mr. Hamill told me to take a seat. I felt very nervous, even though I had a feeling I wasn't in trouble. Mr. Hamill asked me a few questions about what I saw, and then I, and then he made me feel much better about the situation. He explained that some symbols are good and some symbols are bad. He said that people need to learn what symbols mean and how they can make people feel. Mr. Hamill told me that they took the swastika down right away because they take this very seriously. As soon as he knew it was there, he locked the door and wouldn't let anyone else in because he didn't want them to see it. Today, I saw for myself that it was gone. Mr. Hamill asked if I felt safe at school. I've always felt safe at school, but I was worried when I saw the swastika. But the way Mr. Hamill handled it, this made me feel even safer. As a Jewish person, I know that things like this happen. I wish they didn't happen anywhere, and I wish they didn't happen at my school. But the way my teacher, Mr. Hamill, handled this was very reassuring. I want to thank Mr. Hamill and Mrs. Mitchell for being so supportive and helpful. My mom said that if I wanted, she would tell this story at the Board of Education meeting. I decided that I want to tell it myself. I want people to hear it and know that adults will help students with problems like this one, even though they are hard. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. That was really important for us to hear, and I appreciate, I appreciate the courage. It's hard even just to get up and speak into the microphone, but to share a story like that, thank you so very much. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to address the board this evening? Yes, come on up.
So, this is also connected to the swastika. Lila Salinger, 38 Bunker Hill Road. Hello, Board of Education. Thank you for having me. My name is Lila Salinger, and I attend Baldwin Middle School, and I'm in the sixth grade. First of all, I want to say thank you to Maya and her mom for inviting me, and to say thank you to, and to say to Maya that you are so brave and caring to bring awareness to something like this. As you might already know, I'm the person who found the swastika in the bathroom. I'm shocked and horrified that this type of thing has happened in a school of mostly kind and caring human beings. I would not have recognized this terrible symbol if it weren't for the book I was reading, Linked by Gorman Corman. This is a realistic fiction story about a school being vandalized multiple times with a swastika symbols, and how I learned what a swastika was. I became curious and looked it up and found that a swastika is a symbol against anyone who isn't a white supremacist. I had never known this before. Why? Because no one openly talks about it. Most students wouldn't know what the symbol was until they looked it up, like me. Most kids know what the Nazis were, but they don't know what a swastika is. Although we think this is all history, multiple symbols and saying have lingered on to today's time and are sadly still used against certain races, religions, and genders. But with children not being educated about the matter, they might say or write these things trying to be funny or make a joke. This is what I presumed happened in the bathroom stall. I think that these important matters should be more openly spoken about and discussed, and we should take this as a learning experience to avoid this type of action happening again. I love my school, and I've always felt safe. I hope we can keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you. That was also wonderful and brave, and we appreciate your coming forward and sharing that with us. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? Mr. Mitchell, is there anyone on Zoom who wants to?
No.
Okay. All right. Wonderful. Thank you to the public who's joined us this evening. We always appreciate having folks here and engaged in what we're discussing and considering and voting on. Thank you to the viewing public as well. I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Congrats, guys. Eighty-five minutes doesn't always happen.